I don't know.
Just.
Hate it.
I'm hurrying Tracy and Billy, yeah. Okay, none of us left yet, that's. All right. All right, we're just gonna keep going and rolling through this. We've got quite a few things on our work session for tonight. And. So, welcome to the 5:00 PM work session, 5:10 PM work session of the Live First 2025. It's not that all council members are present. However, Councilmember Richie is online. Councilmember Richie, you wanna say hi?
Hello, I'm here, thank you.
All right, first of all, let's just really quickly review the agenda for tonight. A lot of minutes, and we've got the partial street vacation out at the BDO. Glenn's gonna talk about the final number for the certified tax rate, and then Janine will go over our financial principles. If we don't get through the work session, we'll come back into the work session. With that, is there any questions about the agenda? All right. Go for it.
Thank you. Well, just, just quickly, we did get our certified tax rate, so I just wanted to go over that before we presented in the regular meeting. So, the rate we did get was point zero zero two one nine three. That was just a little bit different from what I presented a couple of weeks ago. The county gave us some new numbers right after I, I said that. So, that's a bit of a correction. The information that I put in my packet has some additional analysis on that, the impacts of how that would work on properties. I took those ten residential properties and those five commercial properties from last year. The analysis I did on that when we were considering all the different rates last year, carried it through to this year, so you could see how this rate would affect all of those same properties. So, you could see that go over a couple of years, just to give you some context about how the, the valuation change and their property, or the certified tax rate changes, how those both go together and how that can impact an individual property. So, I also asked just if he could come up and talk about the estimates a little bit. We tried to fumble our way through that a couple of weeks ago, where we adopted the budget, but I did a terrible job of trying to explain it. And so, it brought somebody who can explain it better than I can.
That was kind of Dave's question.
I don't really remember that.
Good, I'm glad you don't remember.
Hopefully, I'll be able to explain that. So, the, the budget was adopted a couple of weeks ago for fiscal year twenty six, the property tax number. What is in the budget versus what was provided to us through the county is different by about nine hundred thousand. Our budgeted amount is about nine hundred thousand dollars higher. And so, we, I went back and I've been looking through, trying to do some analysis, and there's a couple of different things. There's a lot of pieces, obviously, with the property tax amount that, that we have to consider. So, each year, as we begin the, the process for budgeting, we look at the prior year and we, we estimate an amount for natural growth. I went back and historically, there were a lot of years we did two percent. There were a few years where, right after COVID, we had done three percent as the projection. And then, last year, we did three percent as well, as far as what we projected versus then comparing that to the amounts that we actually received. It was a little lower in their projection, and then this year was actually even lower than that. And so, we're actually, I, I reached out to the county, trying to get some clarification on the, the new growth numbers, because the amount that's in for this next year is substantially lower than it has been in prior years. So, I wanna make sure, because one of the issues, they, they've implemented a new software this year. And I guess they had some issues with some property values and different things, and that's what was delayed in us getting our number to begin with. And then, why we got a second number, because there was, they found some other errors. And so, we're, we're waiting to hear back to get some clarification on, on, on the new, the new growth number. But that is one that has created why we have a little bit of a difference. But in looking back historically, prior to fiscal year twenty five, we've actually had exceeded the amount that the county had shown as the amount received. And part of that's due to a component of the property tax amount that we received for personal property. And in looking through the information provided to the county, personal property is valued. And then, the amount that we receive, it actually takes time before we actually receive it. So, for, for example, for what they just provided to us, the valuation for personal property is related to twenty twenty four, last year, their estimates. And that's what we would be receiving next year. And so, there's a little bit of a timing issue sometimes. And then, in looking back at the, the, the last ten years of history of the personal property portion of the, of, of our proper, of our value, valuation. We, we can see a large investment during the COVID years, as there was a lot of money in the economy. And so, as a lot of, you know, businesses and things were purchasing, those, it did push that up. And so, the hard thing is to, to set out, so a lot of those come down to depreciation. And, and you know, as those values drop, then those, those values will drop. And so, trying to gauge that each year. So, that's also created a little bit of discrepancy. So, at this point, so that's, so those are the two big things as to why we're seeing a difference between what the proposed budget amount was and what the county provided. But in discussion, administration, we're, we're, at this point, not, we will keep an eye on it and see where, how things go through this fiscal year twenty six, now that it's July first. And we'll, and we'll keep an eye on, make sure that we are on track to what we, we should have budgeted. But where we have a healthy fund balance, we, we're not, we're not as worried. But when we get to the fiscal year twenty seven cycle, we will make sure that we do an evaluation and, and, and look at it in more detail and if we need to make adjustments. So, does that help? You know, that's a lot, a lot of components, the property tax number.
So, in, instead of reducing our budget by nine hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna leave the budget the same, but keep an eye on it.
Yes, keep an eye on it, and knowing that we do have a healthy fund balance that we'll be able, that we can fall back on if we do end up short in that revenue. So, the pinch could be felt as we budget for twenty seven. Yeah, and then, like I said, when we, when we begin the twenty seven budget process, we'll make sure to try to account for that and, and chew that up. Since, since this is two years in a row that we've budgeted higher than what the county.
And is that the best practice? I mean, or should we actually reduce the budget by nine hundred thousand?
If, if things were tighter with our fund balance, then, then we would need to look to do that. But where we do have a healthy fund balance that we can rely on right now, we can use that as a fallback for this year.
Is it best practice? Or should we just automatically?
It's an art, not a science.
Yeah.
I guess, I, I guess my question is, should we transfer the nine hundred thousand dollars into the budget? I know it's fund balance.
Well, the, the change in the budget would be a reduction to that, and at least in the use of fund balance, and so.
I knew that, that came out of my mouth.
Yeah, and so, but by leaving the budget as is, and we don't receive that money, then our, and our expenditures exceed revenue, then it would re, in effect, reduce fund balance.
I, I was just going to pretty much say that, the same thing, and, and to remember that. I think we, we have a, our, our information goes back to twenty seventeen. Really, all but the last two years, we have exceeded what the county says we'll get. So, we have a long history of seeing that our revenue exceeds the projection. And Justin's talked about a lot of reasons why that happened. It, it's hard to predict. So, at this point, we can certainly make that adjustment, but our recommendation would be, let's watch it.
Only we had a financial plan that goes out five years.
I just was gonna make a comment, just, it seems like, you know, this maybe could be a, a small correction, but certainly watching it seems prudent. I also think, you know, maybe Councilmember Blair can weigh in on how fund balance challenges were when he first was elected, and how things are different now, and, and why we may be in a, in a better position to take a wait-and-see approach, and rather than a much more cautious or aggressive stance. I don't know.
I think I've been. Yeah, and, so, right now, we're, we're pushing up against that maximum amount that we're allowed to carry in fund balance versus fifteen years ago, and we were on the floor. And so, if, if we were in that, then yes, we would definitely do to, to make a proposal to reduce expense, because that would be a concern. But where we're sitting with our, our fund balance right now, we're, we're comfortable.
Thanks.
Can I just ask a simple question?
Yeah.
If it was like, maybe one point five million or two million dollars off, would we consider transferring that money in or making adjustments? I think, I mean, are we under a certain threshold we feel comfortable with?
Well, when you look at a twenty nine, twenty, twenty one million dollar budget, you know, a million dollars, it, it is a decent amount. But at this point, I think if it was higher, we probably still would, would probably propose to, to stay as it is, just, and just watch it as we go throughout the year. And then, if we get during the year and it, it looks like it is gonna, it would be that way, then at that point, we'd look at what we need to do to cut expense.
Okay.
Justin, are your next two items lengthy to CIP fund?
I don't believe so. They're, they're, I don't think they would take too long.
If you'd like to, just go ahead and finish that, and then, um.
It is switched. We have the rezone first. So, it'd be okay to switch the order? We have the rezone first time here?
Yeah, I was just trying to keep going.
Yeah, yeah. So, the two items for your consideration, the first one is a budget opening, and I know part of this is related to some discussions that we've had. So, in the, this, and just as a reminder, so what the budget opening is doing is taking the two items that, or the three items that were put back into the allocator for future projects with the adoption of the twenty six budget, and, and the proposal is to, to move those. I know that further discussion is, is wanted, but, so it's taking that eight million dollars and reallocating that back to use for the purchase of the, the Kiesel building, the All Abilities Park, and then putting two and a half million aside for the future Union Station. And then, that, and then to make it so that we actually have an amount in this budget opening, we do have a couple of items that we would propose being recognized in this. And I need to apologize right now, there's, I actually have a second slide. On the initial packet that was sent, there was one item that, after I transmitted, I've received more information on what we were using the funds for. But, so the first, the twelve thousand five hundred, so that is recognizing the Dental Park Foundation funds to help with the Centennial Park maintenance. We, we, we adjust this budget each year as we receive those funds. This is for the, the fourth payment from last fiscal year, so this is adjusting for that. So, this is increasing that budget to be able to continue to do maintenance along the Parkway Trail. And then, the other one, I'm gonna go ahead and go to this slide, because we have, we've sent an updated packet to council staff. The, we received a rebate from Rocky Mountain Power for a Watt Smart rebate in relation to the building of the Marshall White Center. And initially, in, in my, my angst, I, I put it into a budget opening to increase the construction account for the Marshall White Center. But that's not where that's needed. And in working with public services and recreation, they're proposing, we actually put that money aside to create a, a, a scholarship program type thing for youth ages three to seventeen, to help cover the cost of admissions for those that qualify for, um, the, for low, the low income, the reduced rate. And so, that, the, these ones would be set aside, and, and then, in working with public services and recreation, as those who qualify, we would use those funds for that. So, that's the, the switch. So, in the packet for next week, that, that is a change. But the, the ordinance, about the total amount of the ordinance doesn't change, it's just where we were putting the money, instead of the CIP fund, it's in our, our grants fund to, to hold there. But, any questions on the budget opening?
Good use of that fund.
Yeah, I'm glad that they caught me and that we were, that we changed that, so we'll do that.
Any questions? No? Okay.
And then, the other item for your consideration, this one is, there's no budget effect, but what it is, is a proposal to amend the staffing document that was just adopted for the year. And, and if I, if there are questions, I do have Chief Matthew here to defer to. But, so for the Police Department, we currently have ten positions in the staffing document that are not budgeted full-time positions, but they're authorized for, for hire, hire ahead. Essentially, if they know there's gonna be resignations or retirements, it gives them the ability to be able to, to hire somebody to be able to backfill that position that they know will be vacated. And so, the proposal is to do the same thing for the Fire Department, is to add five, five float positions for them. So, again, there's no budgetary impact. On the left side, you can see, this is the, the fire, the size of the Fire Department right now. There's currently a hundred and thirty three full-time positions, a hundred and twenty seven of those are sworn fire personnel. So, forty eight of those are firefighters. So, this would, it doesn't increase the number of positions in the staffing document, but it allows, adds five. It's at the very tail end of the last page of the staffing document as a authorized for hire. So, we don't actually budget for these, but what we will do during the year is if, if the Fire Department fills all hundred and three position, thirty three positions and fills these five positions, we'll keep an eye and track to make sure that if we are finna approach that budget. But as you know, the last few, several years, we haven't pushed up against that. But this gives them that ability to be able to fill a position before it's vacated by having these authorized. Any questions for me or for Chief?
So, is there some kind of constraint in human resources that prevents Fire Department from interviewing and hiring somebody predicated on somebody else leaving? I mean, hey, we're gonna have a position come open, but it's not until the end of the month, like to hire you today. But we'll start you at the end of the month. I'm not quite sure why this is necessary, unless there's some kind of a hurdle in human resources that I'm not aware of.
So, if they were to, to offer, and I, I mainly name on Lisa or Chief Matthew, but by, by extending an offer and hiring above what they've been authorized, so they've been authorized to ha- hire a hundred and thirty three positions, that would in fact be exceeding that amount that's been authorized by City Council on how many they can have.
But wouldn't you just wait to execute employment documents until the person departing is gone, and then you execute the documents?
Very good question.
Thank you for humor.
What, what I can say is that, um, four or five years ago, the, the quality of the candidates that we were hiring were basically those that were available and certified and capable of doing the job, because there was so much competition. And so, it may have not mattered too much about whether we hired the, the number one individual, or the number three, or number five individual, because they were relatively similar. What we're starting to see, because some of the things you've done in previous years in terms of wages and benefits and being more competitive, is we're getting a, a higher quality of pool that's applying. However, I'll give you an example. I interviewed an individual two weeks ago, wanted to offer him a position, knowing that I know of two people that are retiring the end of July, but have not submitted their notices yet. Well, this number one candidate was interviewing one day later with Provo City Fire Department. And I wanted to grab this person while we could and offer him a job before we lost him to another department. And so, really, it's being nimble enough, and, and I get the issue that we're not getting any more budgetary dollars, we're just getting some flexibility in being, being able to hire somebody a little bit quicker than maybe what we normally could, because if I don't have a notice in hand and I haven't accepted that resignation, I can't offer a position to someone. And, and even to some degree, we've had situations where somebody's giving me a notice that I'm, I'm gonna resign in a month, and they end up changing their mind. And so, trying to say that for a would-be applicant, I'll hire you in a month, but I can't hire you until this individual's absolutely gone. So, I have to wait that period of time. If, in that meantime, while that person could get an offer from somewhere else, then we lose the opportunity to grab that high-quality candidate. And so, it's really given us the flexibility. Will we exercise it? Obviously, I'm retiring, but with the new chief, I would advise him to use it with discretion. Use it when it's really important to, to hire a candidate that you really don't wanna lose to another department, not do it just to do it continually to be overstaffed, but do it knowing that you have a vacancies come, vacancy coming up, you're gonna have to be responsible for it budgetarily. And so, you can't just overfill and overstaff, but do it to ensure that you're gra- grabbing or hiring the quality applicants that are available at time, because we are starting to compete for those upper-tier candidates.
So, this gives us the opportunity to formally hire somebody, but not engage them in their compensation until a time.
Well, technically, we could. We, technically, we could still pay them, but what the chief's responsible for is living within the budget. So, where you say, okay, we've overextended or over expended the budget, where do we make up for it? Well, somewhere along the line, that you hire somebody at a lower level than, than what the, the person leaving, was at a higher level, and you make up difference there. So, at the end of the year, we watch that, and Justin will be reminding the chief, say, okay, if you're overextending, your personnel line item counts, you're gonna have to deal with that and figure out a way to balance that.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Yeah, and my only concern is that tho- those are dollars that we are now to compensate for raising. So, now, we're taking five positions out of that location.
So, I have a question about hiring, the, the practical aspect of it. So, but let's say you did hire that guy from Provo, or guy that, that interview opinion there. And he says, oh, yeah, okay, I'll take that job. How, how often do they say, well, I took that job in Provo.
We, once we've hired someone, made that commitment to them, I can't recall a time where a brand-new hire, I, maybe one time, an individual was competing for another position in another department, and this one was in his hometown. I believe it was like Mapleton, somewhere in Weber, or Utah County. And he called, called me back and said, look, I'm really sorry, but I got, I worked part-time at this department, I didn't realize this full-time position was gonna open. I've been loyal to them, they've been loyal to me. I appreciate you extending me an offer, but I'm gonna take the full-time job in the department I've been working for two years at it. That has happened, but I can't recall a time when somebody else I've already offered has come back. So, for example, this one individual that I wanted to hire is from down south, a town from way down south, and, and didn't have any allegiance to anywhere along the, the Wasatch Front. But the fact that I offered him a job first and told him that we were impressed with his skillset and his knowledge and abilities, uh, and we wanted to extend an offer to make sure you came to Ogden, he, he really appreciated that. And he says, I'll see you on August first. And unfortunately for him, he was one that I did have a, a retirement notice in hand. But, um, and so, I, I told him, we can, and HR allows us to do all the pre-hire, you know, pre-screening, the, the health occupation evaluations, the physical fitness testing, because they're not getting paid when they're doing all the screening. But as soon as they get paid, we're all, we, we have now put in a person above our allowed, a lot of them. And so, therefore, we couldn't actually start paying him. But this way, I can guarantee we're hiring him. And if something were to happen to that individual, I could be overstaffed, but how long does that occur? How long could it go on for? It could go on for a month or two. If the person decided not to retire, and I would have to figure out how to balance the budget, because there's no money to allow for that. Yeah. And, and there's, there's some flexibility throughout the year that things occur. There's one period of time that we try, we, if we get retirements, resignations in the November, December area, during the month of January, it's a low vacation utilization month. So, we, we are not as desperate to keep things in service. But what, what it amounts to on the negative side is the time that we have to train, get them ready to come out and start working. We can't just hire applicant A, and when employee is, is leaving on, say, July thirty first or July thirtieth, we can't just plug in the applicant A into that position. All of the four weeks of our new hire academy he has to go through, so that, we don't have a person for that position. So, we either have to backfill it with overtime, or we have to run short. So, that's a detriment to the service level to the community. So, we're not talking about that yet. So, there is a negative impact in the transition of time it takes to replace a departing person. And this gives us a little bit of flexibility to deal with that. And, and minus my retirement, Justin would be saying, here's where you're at personnel-dollar-wise. You know, three months in, six months in, nine months in, you're gonna have to make some adjustments if you're going over.
And, thanks. And then, just as a reminder, so the Police Department has, has been doing this for several years. I believe it was Chief Watt, when he was Police Chief. We did the same thing, and, and, and in your comment about the, the budget and the, using those excess dollars for future years, we get to, obviously, with, we still push up against it, but it allows that flexibility during those timeframes when they are fully staffed to be able to, to do that, so.
Okay, any other questions? Unless there's any concerns, this is scheduled for next week for action.
Both items correct.
Ken, you have any questions? Okay. We lost him.
Sorry, no, I was just looking to, anyway, good. No, no questions for me. Just trying to get back to the Zoom page to unmute myself.
Well, we'll, I'll ask Nitti, let you wait a little bit longer.
Hello. Evening, city councillors. So, this is a request for a zone change. This came with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. The applicant Tyler Alexander's here today. It's a request at one fifty-five West Fourteenth Street. It's currently an M one, which is a light industrial zone, and they want to go to a C three, which is a commercial zone. Uh, the property's thirty-two thousand square feet. It has a twelve thousand square foot building on it now. Uh, that's existing use as a, for a gym. This is an aerial that shows the building, and you see the parking and some outdoor storage on the existing building. The street is at the top on this particular photo. And here's a, a street view of the building. You see, it's a sort of an industrial-type building with the parking and some storage. It's an older building, it's been there for quite a while. Uh, the applicant's requesting a change from M one to C three. This table shows some of the uses that you can do in C three that you can't in M one, which include things like a beauty salon, a barber, tanning, or tattoo, office services, a medical office, or a therapy office, a general retail sales. Those would be uses that they could do, and in fact, they've indicated that's the sort of use they wanna do. They've got a tattoo business, they'd like to move in there, possibly a therapy business, or some other sort of business in that area. Um, it would eliminate some uses. Uh, there, the, there is some manufacturing that is allowed in C three, which is, and basic assembly of projects, products of like fifteen thousand square foot maximum. But other sort of, uh, manufacturing would no longer be allowed, and storage uses are no longer allowed. But the C three is more in line with what the applicant wants to use the building for, and that's why they're asking for it.
So, the, like just before, that box that you had, pardon, one more, one more back. Yeah, the, the little yellow box is, is that the rezone, or?
No, it's the whole property.
All property.
Yeah, that's just one tenant space that, uh.
Okay, so, that, that, so they're not trying to bisect the building?
No.
Okay, great, thanks.
When looking at zone changes, we look at our general plan and what the community plan says, and this community plan actually says, uh, we ought to rezone it to C three. So, big reason why this is coming to you with the Positive Recommendation Room staff and from the Planning Commission. There's actually a desire to encourage commercial uses along this area. Uh, there are several criteria that I'll go through. We look at, like, is there an edge to development? It is actually on the border between the M one and the C three. You see, on the north, there is the existing Winco Shopping Center. And there are various sort of borderline uses, like there are sign-printing shops, which could be allowed in either C three or M one, auto repair shops, which also could be allowed in either. So, it is have a borderline transition area between the commercial and the light industrial.
But let me ask another question with regards to that, then. Where, where we would be kind of isolating the sign shop, yeah, you know, between two C's, C threes, and the sign shop can, can function in a C three, why wouldn't we just make it up?
Uh, we could do that. Uh, we, yeah, we didn't, this came to us as a, uh, application from one property owner. But, yeah, the council could ask that we, you know, do notify, notification and do that, include that other property.
I know we talked years ago about trying to, trying to, to transition into the commercial along that, along that whole corridor. And, and the, the similar, you know, the, the neighborhood, neighboring uses are those kind of things. Kind of seems like it might be a good time to do that.
Yeah.
Just to.
Yeah, we could initiate that. Other criteria is that properties face each other the same zone. In this case, this would make it so that it's C3 across the street. So they would face each other. Doesn't cut across lots or development. They are doing the whole lot. Doesn't isolate a neighborhood. And the traffic patterns, it is, it's not along Main Wall Avenue. So it is a little off beaten path. But it is in a commercial area. So and the applicant feels that, you know, these sorts of uses would be productive for his property. And then looking at the property, there are some things that we'd look at when transitioning from the M1 to C3, if there was to be commercial uses. There is, this is non complying for parking. We don't allow, you know, paving right up to the property line and backing out the street. If they are just changing uses inside the building, that isn't necessarily a requirement that they upgrade that. But if they were going to add these more, these uses that have higher parking requirements, they would have to re stripe the parking lot to add more parking. Again, there's some outdoor storage and that would have to go. So so they would re do a reconfiguration of the parking spaces depending on the uses. And we would require that before we'd sign off on the building license. And again, if they do sign, they would need that. The landscaping, there would be some requirements if they're expanding the floor area, which probably not going to do.
And they're aware of all these changes that are required?
Yep. So the client commission recommends you approve rezoning.
Any questions?
Seems pretty much in harmony.
This is scheduled for action on July 15.
Okay. Other than I don't think we need any more tattoo shops, but that's. They can't admit it's not because of what's going in there. It's sounds like it's the purpose of the areas. Can we limit that?
You could. We've got limits on some particular uses like short term loan businesses got a limit on it. You could require it as condition of the zone change if you wanted to.
That's hard. That's a hard thing to do, though.
I think they pay sales tax for tattoos.
I'm just saying. I actually don't think we need any more SOBs, but that's another story. That's fine. I I'm good. You you're good. Okay. July 15. Any other questions? All right, Lori. Hey, we're getting you. We're getting through this. And if you don't get through it in 17 minutes, then you'll have to come back.
We should get through this.
Okay.
17 minutes. Easy peasy.
There's nothing.
Don't say that.
Okay, we won't say that. They don't? No, that's a service, right? Just like a hair dryer.
Depends the other products they sell.
Hey, we are looking at the Arts Grants Recommendation for fiscal year 26. Of course, your guys' role in this process is to determine that the value of the money that we're giving out for grants is is, you know, the value to the community is equal to the value of the money. So in your packets, I'm sure you reviewed a lot of the details, but I just want to go over a quick review. The grants are rigorously reviewed and scored with a very awaited per question that they answer have different weights on the criteria. And we look at the quality of the mission. We look at the quality of the programs that they're offering or the project. We look at the number of creatives that are involved and the member, number of community people that are engaged with each program or a project. We like to see that the community is like the programs are open for everyone in the community to participate. It's a strong application would show that they have a strong history of producing programming. So we can, we know that they're going to be successful at pulling off these projects or programming. We want to see a strong marketing plan, a good balanced budget in that it aligns with the arts advisory master plan goals. So here's a quick overview. This year we got three, we received 33 applications and those were reviewed and scored. And we're recommending that 29 of those applications be looked at for funding. General support applications come in. Those are arts based nonprofits are required to hold that nonprofit designation to apply in general support. We received nine applications and those nine applications are being recommended for funding in the amount of $64,000. And project support, we had 24 applications and 20 of those applications are being recommended for funding for $96,000. Our project support are can be a nonprofit. It can be as an individual artist, or it could be just a smaller business doing some sort of project or programming for the community. So we have 29 applications we're presenting today and we'll have 160,000 go out in funding if this is approved. That would be 150,000 from fiscal years 26 2026 allocation of funding. And then we have 10,000 of rollover funds from returned grant monies. And a lot of it came from COVID when a lot of people didn't do their programming. So here's a quick two year comparison. Last year, we had 31 applications. They the total last was 248,500. This year, we had 33 applications with 315,610 in request. I'm not sure we gave that 150,000 this year. If approved, we'll do 160. Here's a three year little chart showing consistently we're about at an ask of 250. It jumped really high this year to 315, but we're consistently across the board, usually 150 this year, 160. So he, these are our nine general support applications. The first column shows the percentage of their annual budget. They're not, general support applicants have to stay. They can't ask more than 15% of their previous year's annual budget. That's second columns, the amount they requested. They the request was 132,000 and then we're recommending a $64,000 award in this for general support. And that is 40% of the funding allocation. And as per ordinance, we try to shoot to be close to a 40 60 split. All of these are pretty longstanding organizations in the community. Do you guys have any questions about any of these grantees or what their programming is? Okay. So next slide is the first 10 of the project support. They can't ask for more than 50% of their project budget. The second column shows the amount that they accreted and then the award amount. We have a little time to quickly go through. Benjamin Zach's is a photography project where he'll have the community take photos. He'll compile them into a show and he'll have free cameras out, those disposable cameras out at different locations, collect them and do an exhibit at Weaver State's downtown bookstore. Culture and craft is a cultural celebration for Dia de los Muertos. Ogden Downtown Alliance is funding for arts programming and performances at their regular events, which is farmer's market, harvest moon, car show, all the things that they do. Lupek is in for a cultural celebration for Cinco de Mayo next May. Ogden Concert Band is for their concert series. They have one in the fall and one in the spring that they're produced free for the community at Ogden High School. Ogden Nature Center is their Earth Day Celebration and their Earth Day Poster Contest they do for the local school children. Ogden Nature, oh, Ogden Pride is free monthly arts classes for the community in poetry, zine making. I think dance, photography, there was a couple of other things they were offering. Ogden School Foundation is for their annual festival, the arts. That is available to all the students in Ogden, in the Ogden schools to submit artwork to be in a show. And then they do student performances during the exhibitions, which are at Echols and at Union Station. And then the Shakespeare Festival will be five different performances. And also a, I believe they have a summer art camp this year that they're offering for youth to participate. And they do do outreach into the schools. And then Park Bloom Utah is arts programming for the severely disabled. And it's held at the Monarch and anyone can come, but it's directed at being accessible for disabled people. And then these are our last 10. Railtown Readings is a live reading, writer, author event that's held at Weaver County Library, free and accessible for anyone to attend. Vannion Collective is van sessions. It's a live music and video podcast that they record at all First Friday Art Stools. Boys and Girls Club is created at the club after school program with arts programming for the children. The Local Artisan Collective is a new program where they'll be producing live music performance during First Friday Art Stool in the Junction. And Charles Foundation is submitting for request funding for help in commissioning a mural for the 27th Street Trailhead. Tribal Love Dancer does drumming and rhythm dance classes in Ogden schools, at the School for Deaf and Blind and at the library and a couple other places. Utah Arts Alliance is asking for money to support their connect program, which is an artist development program that they hold here in Ogden. Artists are able to come and bring pieces. They do critiques, they do professional development. And then those artists that participate, they do votes and then they're selected to participate in the year end event and be awarded grant money. Utah Neighborhood Connection is an after school program for junior high school children with arts programming, like music lessons and these sort of things. Weaver State is a culture celebration of the Native American culture and their annual powwow, which is held next spring. Youth impact is, of course, their arts classes that they offer for the children who participate in that program. And it's they do welding and, you know, guitar lessons and digital art, all kinds of really awesome things for those kids there. So the amount requested here is 183,610 and we're recommending 96,000, which ends up being exactly 60,000 of the split of 160. So there's our just quick recap. Whoa. 160 for this year, 64,000 to general and 96,000 to project support. Do you have any questions at all on any of those grantees, the process or anything about the arts grants?
Why do you think there was so much more asked this year?
I'm not sure. And I think these applications came in before a lot of organizations lost a lot of funding because of the what's going on with the NEH and and the NEA. A lot of grant funding that a lot of these organizations normally depend on is gone. But it could be that we're doing really good marketing this, you know, this program and this opportunity for the community. Because we did have a lot of new applicants this year. I, you know, some of them, we don't have a limit on ask and sometimes you get really high asks. I think they're just shooting from the moon, hoping they'll get any sort of portion of that. The general support applicants are usually pretty realistic. It's our project ones. I mean, we did get one that was asked for $20,000, but it was like a capital improvement ask, you know, to expand their private business. And of course, we didn't recommend that for funding, but that was $20,000 of that 315. So I I can't really say why, but I do think that our ask will probably be up next year because of the loss of the grant funding from the federal level, which then kind of rolls downhill and it's affecting the state level grants. And so the our general support applicants are going to be probably needing more support, you know, coming up, so.
Like you said, there was some are not recommended for funding. And I know you've explained that in the past, but was there anything in particular that those?
Well, if they don't meet the funding threshold to score, we have, they have to at least get a 77 or above on their scoring rubric. And if they don't hit that, and there's usually a pretty strong reason either there's something wrong with their budget, you know, the project just doesn't even seem feasible. One of them wanted to do, and I love the idea, they want to do mosaic tile in the cracks in the sidewalk. And we asked, you know, we asked engineering and they asked for additional information, like what cities are doing this? Do they have problems, you know, how does it last? And they they didn't follow through and provide that information. And so they weren't recommended for funding because they submitted a really cool idea, but really didn't have a way to follow through with it. Another one was just front yard art, like like museum kind of design. And it was like an eye in the sky idea, but not really well thought out. So really, like, they're, the committee is really good at going through and being like, is this realistic? Can they pull this off? Is this going to be a risk, you know, like a liability risk or anything like that? And so generally, it's a major problem like that. Or, you know, the budget is not feasible. You know, we have some pretty, pretty knowledgeable committee members that have produced shows. They know what things cost. And so they're looking at these budgets really well and understand what what's, that's why usually they don't get funding.
Any other questions, Lori?
No. It feels like we get an awful lot done for 160,000 bucks. You can spread around very nicely, Lori. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. That's, I think it's an amazing thing that you guys find, like helps. It's when I add it all up, when you add up all the people that they're impacting, it's a huge number.
Yeah.
And it really is, so.
Thanks for getting all those letters.
I know.
About all the different things, the people, the amount of people you have to.
Lori, what is the, what is the timeframe for applications to be submitted?
This last year, we opened it up in the beginning of November and it closed December 13th. And we'll probably run this next cycle around that same time because that allows, we're not running in line with ramp grant applications, you know, so that they can separate because ramp grants are due at the mid, like January 13ish or so. And so we kind of move it up and then it gives us time to get through the whole rigorous process of reviewing and scoring and writing this whole packet for you so that it comes in line with the budget. We're a little behind this year because we had to, you know, go through some some stuff with the grants and and but but we're here now.
What about the Mayor Awards Art Grant or Art Awards?
So the Mayor's Awards aren't a grant program.
What is the timeframe on those?
Their nominations are open year round, but we press really hard to get nominations before the deadline, which is July 25th this year. And and that's for then this, this Mayor's Awards in November. But we do need time then for to do all the work on creating the video piece for that honory and then getting everything awards, the award ordered and all the work that goes into that event, so.
Any other? Any? Len, thank you for sending out our detailed schedule for.
The presentation was really impressive.
Thank you.
Not pretty good. I'm a fan of a good spend.
I am.
Great. We will see you.